Follow the meeting to order, a meeting of the Carver Board, Carver Select Board, Tuesday, December 17th. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 15. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
And our community prayer from Mr. Belbin.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us what we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment to this office, that it is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life of all that we seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Now it's time for citizen participation. Any citizens that are with us this evening that would like to address the board can do so at this time. And it is, we ask you to limit it to three minutes so that other people can have a chance to speak. I see a hand raised. Please approach the table.
I think I did this before once.
Name and address, please.
Robert Belbin, 26 Gate Street. I'm sitting here before us because the chairman has taken away the ability of selectmen to have selectman notes, just announcements.
On the advice of council?
I disagree. But no matter what, a couple of things I want to bring up here. The first one is, I hope that the Board of Selectmen will really think about entering a municipal agreement with the town of Wareham. They sent us a notice. The South Carver tennis courts, I'd like to see if those can be removed and rehabilitated. A couple of people have talked about pickleball courts down there to be created for seniors. That would be a great opportunity. Also, the final thing here is that I did file two complaints with the chairman about two officials, and I'd like to know when that's going to be investigated. Thank you.
Were there any other citizens that would like to address the board this evening? Name and address.
Donna Marie Foran, 278 South Meadow Village, Carver. I just wanted just to say thank you to the town for the wreaths across Carver. It went very well, and a wreath was placed at every grave. But I do have a report that we have more veterans in our town than what's recorded. And so I've gone to the appropriate people to talk about that. So we have about 35 more veterans than what our count is for. But thank you to everyone who came out and participated. And thank you to all the families and the businesses in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wanted to address the board this evening? There being none, we will now move to a request for an appointment to the Carver Cultural Council. Gail Nowin, applicant. If Ms. Nowin is here, if she could approach the table. Name and address, please.
Gail Nowin, 15 Old Main Street.
Gail, could you talk right into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. Gail Nowin, 15 Old Main Street.
And would you like to tell us a little bit about your interest in the cultural council?
Oh, where's the thing I filled out? I didn't bring it with me.
Well, you can indicate that you, we can reference that. Was there anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay.
Have you all read it? I should have brought it with me. I'm sorry.
No, we all, it was all part of our packet, so we had a chance to review it. Any questions from the board?
Just, Gail, I've read your application, and I think you'd be an excellent fit for that council, so thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to being on it if you appoint me.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we go ahead and appoint Gail Nowin.
Second.
I don't know if you got that, Elaine, as to who did what, but. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I want to thank you, Gail. We really, we really will benefit from you. Thanks.
No further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
All right, now I have to get to work.
Congratulations.
Now I have to go to work.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
All right. We have a request to dissolve the Fire Station Building Committee by the Chair, Bill Harriman. The committee is no longer needed by the town.
Make a motion, we dissolve the Fire Station Building Committee.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, we'll move on now to the Town Hall Employee Satisfaction Survey Results. Who is speaking to that? The Assistant Town Administrator, Elaine Weston.
Okay, you had asked for this to be put on the agenda, so I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for. So the first thing I just want to do is differentiate from an HR standpoint morale versus employee satisfaction. Morale is the day-to-day. If you're having a good day or someone in your office is having a good day, morale is good. If someone's having a bad day, someone will say morale is not good. Employee satisfaction is about employee engagement, and the way to properly assess employee satisfaction is to identify the areas of satisfaction, find out what drives employee engagement in the office, and then it is our job to take action on the areas that need improvement, and that happens over time. So these areas need to be generalized, otherwise they would be specific to each person, and we're not going to have a specific survey to each person. The areas looked at were environment, supervisor, coworkers, and then an area for training, development, and resources. The questions were developed in these areas based off of questions from the Best Companies Group, which has 25 years specializing in employee satisfaction surveys. Then I customized these questions to pertain to the Town Hall, because most of these were pertaining to large companies. So in the areas of, as you can see from your results, the work environment, supervisor, and coworkers, for all the people that responded, everyone but one or two people agreed, strongly agreed, or were neutral to every question. And the area that we need to take focus on is the area of training, development, and resources.
All right. Take questions from the board?
Thank you very much for, I'll start off, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for doing the survey. It's great to hear from our employees. I want to go ahead and make it known that strongly agreed for under supervisory was really good, so I want to say thank you very much for that. And the targeted ones for training and whatnot, that's important. I'm 100% involved in training my prior job, so getting people trained the right way when they come in through the door is the best thing to do. So thank you very much for doing this.
You're welcome.
Anyone else want to make any comments?
I guess my only comment would be, well, a couple of comments. I think overall this was extremely positive, so I think it's, looks very good for our town. I think it shows that our employees are happy, and everything's a pretty good situation here at Town Hall, though I will speak to the one, looks like we maybe have to do a little work, as you noted, in training, so.
Yeah.
But there's always something. So I think this was, this was overall very good, and I'm happy with it.
Alan?
Yeah, I'll go along with that. I think the way it was laid out into the different areas, I think was very telling. I was real happy with the supervisor and the interaction with coworkers areas. They were very, very good. And then, I'm not going to beat a dead horse with the training and resources. I think that pretty much speaks for itself. On the work environment, that was a little bit more scattergun, and maybe we need to work a little bit on, especially my work area, it's adequately heated, cooled.
Yeah.
Again, but that's a personal issue, too, you know. Well, maybe one person's too hot, another person's too cold, but I think, you know, we can't ignore that one, so. Definitely the resources, training, it's first, and then as we get time, we can start working with the work environment. But overall, excellent job, and thank you very much for your efforts on this.
You're welcome.
I would just add to the hot and cold is that I, having been around when they were building or renovating the building, I know things got tight, and a lot of building committees make a mistake of thinking that the HVAC system is an easy target to try to save a couple of dollars, and I know for a fact that that was targeted here to save a few dollars, and as a result, whether it's winter or summer, there's one, one office you can hang livestock in because it's so cold, and another where you can cook meat in because it's so hot. And so that's going to take a system enhancement to straighten that out, unfortunately, because they took some shortcuts when they renovated the building. But anyway, Sarah, do you have anything?
Yes, I just wanted to know whether the surveys were anonymous?
Yes, that was in your cover letter, so they were sent out on, let's see, November 19th. And in the instructions they were given, which you all received a copy of, they were instructed to just put it in an inter-office envelope and leave it in the mailbox. So we have no control over who returned them, who responded to each question. We have no idea.
That's great. Thanks very much.
Yeah, I can only tell you, my experience when I was with Liberty Mutual, they did these every year, and this, this one came out a lot better than those used to, so that I was, I was actually sort of impressed. And again, just to mention the low-hanging fruit, you know, the, didn't get enough training for initial training. I mean, that's an easy one to target, and that's, that's something that, you know, it should be an easy fix to know that when you get someone coming on board, you know, maybe, but you can even ask what, what else needs to be done, so. Yeah, overall, very good, so thank you for putting that together. Okay, we move on to Select Board votes. We have the question to approve solar tax agreement that must be approved by the Planning Board and Conservation Commission for construction that will follow Carver's financial management policies, which talks about how it's divided, how the fees are divided up. So if we could hear about, let's start with 42 Fuller Street.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I mean, just to summarize, these, we're using the standard document that we've used in the past for our solar projects. Total, these three projects will add about $300,000 in solar revenue per year for the three of them.
And what's the length of the term?
Uh, they're 20 years with the option to renew for additional five years.
And can you give us the?
Actually, I take that back. These are just straight 20 years for these.
Can you give us the breakdown on how much from each of them?
Sure, approximately $55,000, 50, yeah, $55,000 for the first one, $192,000 for the second one, and $57,000 for the third.
All right, now, I know nothing about electricity, but I would have thought that the 2,842 megawatts would generate more income than the 10 megawatts.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's 2.842.
Okay, that's an eyesight issue. Thank you. That's, that wasn't a comma, that's a, that's a period. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you if that was a number two.
Okay, so that's 2.842, not 2,842.
Just under three.
Glad we got that cleared up. And again, just to confirm that this is the standard form that we have been voting on? There are no changes, there's no customization? This is the standard form that we have been using all along?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve all three of the solar tax agreements.
Second.
I would just like to ask if we have a, when you think the monies from these might be starting to show up fiscal year-wise?
Yes, so the 60 Rochester will be in our FY '20 budget, I'm sorry, '21 budget. The other two will not be completed until January 2021, so they'll be half a year. So as we, as you may recall, when we went over our 10-year forecast, we had solar in this year, in the next year, and the following year, based upon when they come online. So the first one, I'm sorry, the last one there, 60 Rochester, will be in the FY '21 budget, and the other two will be in the FY '22 budget.
So the budget we looked at anticipated these revenues?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Other questions?
When are we going to max out on our wattage while, in solar projects? There is a total figure of how much we can actually have, correct?
I'm not aware of any figure. There's a maximum figure, no.
Okay. No, I, I, I thought that when the governor recently talked, I thought we were coming to the end of a solar cycle or something, and I thought there was.
So there's, solar projects will continue as long as the market bears them, okay? What you have is two different programs that have caps on it. One is that a municipality can only purchase so much solar based upon what its needs are.
For, for itself.
For itself. That has nothing to do with this. But I mean, that, that could be what you're hearing, Bob. The second item is that with the smart program, there are, I believe it's, it's seven or nine troughs that are in there that are based upon demand. When those demands get done, then the incentives will go away. Now whether or not companies still want to go forward building solar at that point, that's their choice, but to my knowledge, there's no cap. Obviously, with any type of infrastructure project, there's always infrastructure constraints, and as solar projects are being built, either the solar builders or the utility companies are expanding their capacity. But to your specific question, is there a cap? There is no cap.
Other questions? Being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
There's already been a motion that was seconded.
Is there any further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I am punchy tonight. Let's go to the.
All that Christmas shopping you've been doing.
Not yet. Let's go to the Town Administrator update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we did receive one citizen petition this year, and that will be reviewed by council, and after the first of the year, when we start to look at the articles, that'll be in your article, your packet, that has to go on the town meeting warrant, and at that point, we'll know whether it's in proper legal form.
Could we, if I may, could we see a copy of that?
We can send that to you, yes.
Thank you.
Distribute it to the whole board?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I kind of have an issue because the way that's presented here is that Town Council is going to review it to see if it's in proper legal form. If it's not in proper legal form, I hope Town Council will help with the petitioner to make it into a legal form, so he can go forward and he can make changes.
No, that's never been our policy. We, we don't, we don't correct, use taxpayer money to correct outside petitions. We could get petitions from Illinois, we could get them from Hawaii, they can come from anybody. It's not the responsibility of the town to make sure that the petition, I, my opinion has always been, we should never use Town Council and taxpayer money to fix an outside petition.
So why is Town, why is Town Council reviewing it, just to see if it's in proper?
Well, they review all articles to, to make sure that they're in proper form.
Sure, so I mean, there's two things here.
We review all the money articles when they used to come in to make sure they were in right form?
There's two items here. One is they see if it's in proper form, that if passed, is it a legal binding document? That's what they do to see if it can, if it can stand legal muster. However, when boards and commissions submit articles, at that point, that's when Town Council does review and help the town boards under the, the government process review and amend articles as need be. But a citizen's petition cannot be amended before town meeting. It has to go forward as written. The Town Council cannot change it at all.
I wasn't aware of that.
It can be changed on Town Meeting floor, though.
I just said before Town Meeting, Town.
That's what I'm saying.
It has to go on the warrant as written.
That's what I'm saying. If Town Council finds that there's something that could be changed or whatnot, then that should be brought forward, so the applicant can go out and change it and help it. Because why should the public have less opportunity to ensure that it's right for Town Council, Town meeting, all right, than the actual government? It kind of puts the, the people at a clear disadvantage, all right?
No, they just need to get good legal advice to do it in the proper form.
But we have Town Council for the town. Once it becomes an article for our Town meeting, it thus becomes part of our town.
Now, we're going to have to agree to disagree. I don't think we should be spending taxpayer money for, you know, what, something could be a very good article coming from the outside, something could be a frivolous article coming from, from outside, we could have 100 of them. You're going to have Town Council review 100 outside petitions and make sure they're all in good working order?
Well, we're going to do that anyways.
No.
No.
We're just sending it out now.
Yeah, what?
Especially here, we're going to see if it's in proper legal form.
I'm saying, what if you had 100 petitions? You expect Town Council to review 100 petitions? Sarah, we've never done this. Are you telling me you now favor Town Council reviewing outside petitions?
I'm sorry, Ron, I'm reading from the agenda.
I understand.
And so why are we doing it for this one, if we've never done it for?
No, no, no. It's to see if it is in order. It's not to correct it. Just to see, yes, it is in order, no, it is not in order. Because normally what we've done is not even let them go forward if they're not in proper order.
Well, you have to let them go forward, but the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen would be to deny because it's not legally binding in good form. But you always have to let it go forward as written.
Mr. Chairman?
That's not my.
Mr. Chairman, as I read this, basically, Town Council is reviewing it, so he, Town Council will be able to allow us to know if it's in proper form. It's not for, for them to go ahead and check legal form and then go back to them, the petitioner and make corrections.
I understand, but Bob was.
I'm agreeing with you.
Bob was asking whether or not we could ask Town Council to put it into legal form if it's not.
No.
Okay, then I, my request is that Town Council say specifically what's not, what they determine is not in proper form.
Well, that's almost doing the job, then, at that point.
It's a different, it's, if we're going to pay him to say, hey, it's not in legal form, I want him to go ahead and qualify that as it not, because this is the reason why it's not in legal form.
Well, in that case, then, he's basically doing the job of saying what has to be done in order to put it in legal form.
No, he's letting us know.
He's letting us know.
I understand, and then, and then the applicant knows what to do in order to revise it.
Well, is that so horrible?
Well, it, in the past, Sarah, you've never supported it.
So why don't I do this, is that by the time we go to debate these articles, we'll know at that time whether it's in proper legal form or not. And then from there, the board can determine what it wants to do.
All right. Next.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the police station contract was executed, I believe, was it last week or the week before? It was executed after our last meeting, that, that I can tell you. So that had, it was last week, so it has been executed, and we're in the process right now of planning a kickoff meeting with the contractors, so we can identify when they're going to start doing demolition and, or site work on the property. So that is moving forward. And I believe the contract was $6.96 million, if I remember correctly, that we executed that for. What's next?
Community living.
Pardon?
I was just telling you he has what's next. I said the community living.
Right.
And finance restructure.
Yes. So at the last meeting, both the finance director and a team of staff and stakeholders presented to the organizational changes for next year for particularly two departments. And we wanted the board to thank on that. I know there was support from all members for those two departments at the last meeting. And we're just in the process of finaling, finalizing our budget, so looking for a vote to support those two organizational changes.
All right, yeah, I think at the last meeting, I had suggested that since we were just seeing it, that we should delay until this meeting in order to take a vote. I know the finance committee supported it unanimously at their meeting. So that, what's the pleasure of the board on the reorganization?
I move that we go ahead and support the community living, finance restructuring, organization will change.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
I'd like to put them as two separate votes.
How so?
Because I don't support the community living one, but I do support the finance one.
Could someone let me know the difference between the two, community living versus the finance?
So the community living was the combination of the library, COA, veterans, and then recreation events.
Okay.
So that's the community living, and then the finance is just the restructuring of the finance department.
There were two different legs.
No, I, I'm just, you know, it's also, the public doesn't have it in front of them, so just. Anything particularly, Bob, that you object to versus one or the other? Anyway, all right, let's do it separately, and then we'll have the discussion. All right, so does someone?
Do the finance first?
Let's, let's, adjust your motion to start with community living?
I would like to.
Well, let's do finance.
I would, no, I would like to have a vote on Mr. Belbin's request to go ahead and split them up.
All right.
That's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
All right. So if there's any further discussion about splitting the vote between community living and finance, being none, those in favor of splitting the vote signify by saying, you made the motion to not do it or to?
No, I've just.
No, I just.
He made a motion to split.
Okay, oh, okay, all right. So Bob made the, Bob made the motion to do it. We got, oh, he had a motion to second, all right. Those in favor of the splits, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, split vote.
I go, Mr. Chairman, I move we go ahead and support the community living portion of the reorganization change.
Second. Further discussion?
I'm against this, just for the mere fact that I still want to see a split between the council on aging and everyone else, and I understand.
What, what do you mean?
Now, this is, it's under one blanket.
Mm-hmm.
I think they still should be their own separate entity, because seniors have a different aspect of how they want to run things. And I don't think that combining them all into one blanket organization will actually do what they want to do, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question through you to the Town Administrator. On the survey that went out to all the 55 and above, does this reorganization conflict with the desires that came out from that survey?
Actually, this, this reorganization complements the survey that, you know, well over 1,000 people responded to in the town, which is really the impetus of the survey work, to, to look at, you know, taking away the barriers of age and focusing on healthy living and giving people more options. In a small town, we need to focus on economies of scale, and the better that we can provide these services over a wide spectrum, I think is what's recommended. We do have the vice chairman of the Council on Aging that's sitting out in the audience, who was involved in that process. I don't know if you have any questions you want to ask her, but she would be more in-depth to answer, you know, from the Council on Aging Board of Directors. I know Bob just mentioned the seniors, but the Council on Aging Board of Directors does represent the seniors.
Further discussion?
Put it out there.
Sarah?
Yeah, thank you. I happen to agree with Bob. Also, it troubles me that we're not only reorganizing, but doing some hiring here as well, when we basically have been given to understand that there's really not, no money for land, the land use departments, who's, who, almost all the people who run those various departments have been cut to part-time. And, I mean, that's a huge, huge part of our town, and I just, I just don't see.
All right. I mean, I guess from my opinion, I know that Dan Badger and his crew did a huge amount of discussion with everybody in that the.
Not knocking their work, I think.
The organizational recommendations that came, came from the individual departments that are satisfied with their current status. So I understand you can have an alternate opinion from what the departments have, but you should be aware that you're running contrary to the departments themselves.
Yes, Jim Walsh was an integral part of this whole discussion, who heads up the whole permitting and inspection.
And when we talk about the seniors, you know.
There are other people whose, whose jobs have been cut to part-time, who actually do the day-to-day stuff.
Sure.
Those departments, so.
And, and when we talk about the seniors, you know, I, after what we went through trying to build a council on aging and that was shot down, and the results of my research were that less than 1% of the senior population uses the council on aging. So I think anything we can do based, if we use that survey to try to come up with a new impetus to grow and develop the council on aging, whatever, what we're doing now isn't working. So we need an organizational change in order to try to get the, the utilization. Less than one percent of the senior population uses the current council on aging. We need to do something differently. Anyway, any other discussion?
Just quickly, I think what we're doing with this reorganization is following the will of the town. Because we, we, we did a survey, the results came back that indicated what the town wanted, and I think by reorganizing in this way, that's really what we're doing, is we're following the results of that survey. So, I, I'm in for support of it.
Other discussion?
I just, the survey was one thing, all right, of what the public wanted. The public, nowhere I think on that survey had actually said anything about reorganizing our town services, of how things are gonna be done. I just don't think it's right at this time to go ahead and start making this changes here with combining all these different services into one group, um, and department. I just don't think it's right.
Well, again, we've all expressed our opinions, so we'll move forward, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
All right, someone wanted to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we support-
Just, would you just give her the roll call, that, or not a roll call, but countless?
Three to two.
I move we go ahead and, uh, support the finance restructure portion of the organizational change.
Second. Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Four in favor, one against. But you didn't wanna discuss-
Meg, you go home now.
But thank you for coming.
Thanks for blessing with your presence for the vote.
Good night.
Uh, so moving on, Mr. Chairman, the Mass Works grant for the urban renewal plan and the Route forty-four development, uh, we are working with the state. We do have, um, the document under contract, and, uh, we're working with the developer to release, um, at least a hundred thousand dollars, if not more, for matching funds. So we can continue the design of that intersection improvement, so that is in the process right now.
You, you say, excuse me, I'm sorry, you say we're working with the developer? Do we know who the developer is?
Yes, and, and the board does too, it's Route forty-four development.
But we, do we know who that is?
Route forty-four development is George McLaughlin and, uh, Bob Delhoms are the owners of the Route forty-four development. Uh, they have a memorandum of agreement, um, uh, for preferred developer status with the redevelopment authority that was executed about four years ago as drafted by town council. That is the developer of the site.
And do we know how, who the, um, proposed, um, company that's gonna be building there?
Uh, we do not.
Okay, so we got this money and we're looking for a hundred thousand, and we still don't know if there's gonna be anybody living there?
Uh, we're, um, living there, no, no one will be living there, uh, it's for a development piece. And right now, what it goes by is the actual zoning, so whatever the use would be, would have to be properly zoned for that area. Um, so again, we're working with the developer on, for, him finding the tenant for the site. He has had many tenants that have looked at the site, and, uh, he had a tenant when the application was submitted to, uh, Mass Office of Business Development, um, and that was put into the application. Uh, but no name was given on the tenant, nor was it required.
There is a school of thought that, uh, some folks may have been waiting for this grant before moving forward with their, to express their interest.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say one thing about this, 'cause this seems to come up an awful lot, but we don't know who's gonna be going in there. Frankly, until it goes before the planning board, it's really none of our business. That is a conversation and negotiation with the developer, Route forty-four development, and whoever they can inter, get interested into putting a facility there. It's not up to the board, and then once they have that agreement, then they, that company or Route forty-four development will go before the planning board with firm plans, including street layouts and things like that. So I mean, I know that, I understand there's an interest by the town, well, what might go in there? We don't know, and it's, like I said, it's not our business. I hope it's something really good, but, you know, that, again, all we can do is hope that the best use and the most profitable use tax-wise is used by that facility. And the three point two million dollar grant, which will be getting matching funds from the developer through their agreement with the RDA, will go ahead and enhance their capability to go ahead and attract the best business possible. So I just think it's kinda fruitless for us to keep going down this path and having people complain, well, we don't know what's going in there. I hope it's soon, I hope we find out, but until the developer reaches an agreement with a purchaser, it's, it's just up there.
Even with the-
Mr. Chair, if I may, having served ten years on the planning board, I understand that, Alan, so the lecture wasn't really necessary. So my question is still, is, is valid. Perhaps we found out yesterday, and now we know. Apparently, the answer is no. There's no harm in asking the question.
I was not, first off, Ms. Huens, I was not lecturing you. I was more referring to Bob, because Bob is a frequent person, no offense, of bringing up who's going in there. And to take it personally like that, I kinda resent that, Ms. Huens.
Folks, folks, folks.
So, Mr. Chairman, okay, my bringing it up is to keep the people involved in what's going on. I wanna see something go in there, okay? I wanna see money come into our town in tax revenue, okay? But I wanna make sure that the public knows what's going on, okay, and how it will affect them in the long term, all right? So, for me bringing it up serves a purpose, and that purpose is to let people know that we're not sitting down, being quiet in a room, talking about this, that, and the other thing. We're sitting here saying, we're questioning, all right? We're doing what we're supposed to do, is question our government, and that's what I'm doing here, and that's what I wanna do, and I'll continue to do it, all right?
Well, but I think you have to understand, Bob, that even if, we could, we could perhaps, uh, it could be, perhaps we acknowledge that we have someone interested in it, but you can't say who it is, because that's a negotiation that's in process. And you, you know, it's, it's like you're negotiating to buy a house, you don't share it with the rest of the real estate world, but you're trying to buy a house.
All right, I was at the planning board meeting when this first all came up, where they said that they had a non-disclosure agreement with somebody at the time. Okay? And then that didn't, whatever happened, happened, whatever.
That deal didn't work out.
But, um, that gives you to think, so that's what I'm saying, is I heard, I know what's out there on the table, I've been with the RDA, I've seen them, okay? I just wanna make sure that things are getting done, they're getting done right, and that the public knows what's going on. And if something comes up between last month and this month, or last meeting and this one, it comes up, that people know, hey, this is what's going on.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with Bob asking, and I, and Bob, and I, believe me, I know you understand why you're doing it, I just wanted to make it also out there that we can ask, but we don't have a right to know.
Well, actually, I'm the one who brought it up first, for the record.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, um, a, um, a developer is under no obligation to even tell the planning board who the tenant is that's gonna be occupying the property. Because nowhere in our zoning does it get to pick what company's coming into town, that market conditions take care of that. The only thing the town can pick, which it has with its master plan and with its zoning, is what types of uses that can come in there. And if that types of use comes in there and they meet all the zoning setbacks, it doesn't matter whether they're ABC or one, two, three company. Uh, and I'll just give you an example, I mean, I know that there was a look a while ago, and then someone Facebooked a post on it about Amazon coming into the town. Well, whether it's Amazon, or it's Home Depot, or whether it's Cisco Food, or whether it's, um, Home Store, or any other UPS, it's a distribution facility. And if it's a distribution facility, it doesn't matter what the name of the company is. And I think that that's where, you know, certainly the planning department, professional planners, and I used to serve as, uh, the president of the Massachusetts Economic Development Council, is you focus on the uses. Because first of all, these top one hundred, top five hundred companies will not release their name. And generally, what happens is there's a developer that's actually building the building and leasing the building back out to them. So you don't get to know who the company is until they actually are moving forward. And that's, so I don't wanna get any false expectations, Bob, that you're gonna know the names.
That we're gonna, that we're gonna be advised that, hey, we're entering negotiations with Cisco, because that would be counterproductive, uh, for the, for the purposes. I think it's just a question of, you know, knowing that there's someone interested or there's not someone interested. It's all gonna be part of a public hearing ultimately, before the planning board, and if people like it or don't like it, they'll have the opportunity to attend the public hearing and register their, uh, their, their, their preference at that point in time, so.
Final thing for me is, um, can we get a copy of that grant or what's included in it? Can you send us a copy?
Absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, next.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one other comment. I just wanna thank the town administrator, the town planner, super representative Gifford, and everybody else that worked so hard to get us that grant.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, when I heard that Quincy was also got a grant, but they only got two million for theirs, and we got three point two out of a little over seventy million total that was available. It was a tremendous amount of work, it's a tremendous benefit for the town, and I just wanna give proper thanks to the team that helped shepherd that through.
And again, just to piggyback on what I was saying, is that since I'm in commercial insurance, I had one of my larger contractors mention to me that they had heard this had gone in, and that perked up their ears. And they were sharing their experience with me, that once that, that, they're the ones that said, once that grant goes through, what they see then is that's when some of the people that might have been interested really sort of step up to the plate. Because now they know the infrastructure is gonna be addressed, so hopefully that'll be the case.
That is a perfect segue into what I was just gonna mention, is that this grant, not only did the project go through MIPA, and it has its full permitting pieces, this grant opens the access door. So whether it's company ABC or one, two, three, it's now a real project, because it actually is gonna go through the cost of putting that infrastructure in there. And I also just wanna make everyone aware that, um, developers, um, and I've seen this time and time again, enter into letters of intent. Sometimes those go to purchase and sale agreements. Doesn't mean they actually close on the property, doesn't mean there's actually a development that's actually gonna happen. Because as they continue to go through all their due diligence, market conditions change, competitors change, and until there's a shovel in the ground with a permit to build a certain-sized building by a certain company, everything is speculative. And, you know, even when an application is put in, it's based upon the best information we have at the time. That information can change over time. But again, the only guiding factors that we have is that there's a zoning regulations, the zoning allow many different uses, and whoever comes in has to abide by those uses unless they go back and change.
Isn't that green-zoned up there?
Green industrial park.
Green industrial park.
Yes, I mean, I think as we know, it was a sewer treatment facility, it was a stump dump, it was a mining facility, um, it's been a lot of things. Um, and so we're trying to put it into a productive role that's gonna create revenue for the town. And this grant is the catapult, as I mentioned, uh, to get us there, and, you know, I'll emphasize my statements that I made before, is that, and Alan, thank you for recognizing myself, the planning director, and the rest of our team. Uh, but we're able to do our job and get these things done due to the commitment of the Board of Selectmen to look forward and focus on the future. And your steadfast support of following what's important for the town and not getting caught up into the, into the nitty-gritty, because that's, that's really how we're able to make these things happen. For that, I thank you again.
Next.
Yes, uh, just a quick update, we completed another round of the water testing, uh, near the, uh, former North Carver landfill. Again, I wanna emphasize, um, that under EPA and DEP standards, never has there been any wells that have tested to qualify as something that's dangerous, or that exceeds, uh, or meets the EPA or DEP levels. Uh, the latest results were negative, and they continue to be negative. We're gonna have another round that actually was done, um, since this agenda was posted, and we'll get those results probably right after the first of the year.
And we're still supplying water?
And we're still supplying water, we have, uh, two people that felt they needed more water, we were providing them three hundred dollars every quarter. Uh, so basically, um, and we have two people that have requested that that's not enough water, and they want five hundred dollars a quarter. So we have given them, uh, the additional five hundred dollars, um, or two thousand dollars a year, but we did say going forward is that, uh, we will need receipts, um, to justify that water usage, to make sure that we're, that the health department is proper stewards of the public funds.
And just, Claire, we didn't give them an additional five hundred dollars, we increased the amount from three hundred to five hundred.
That is correct, it went from three to five hundred dollars per quarter for two people. And again, I, I just wanna come back and emphasize, as the results have shown, there has never been any wells that have met or exceeded the state or federal guidelines. And DEP is actively involved in overseeing this project. Uh, moving on, Mr. Chairman, uh, just my last item that I have on here is, um, um, there was some discussion at a previous meeting, um, regarding, um, the, the Cedar Swamp. And, um, I think there was some misinformation that I just wanna clarify, is that those were done under land of low value. So they were not an official taking under the normal tax title process. It's a DOR requirement that allows land of little value that you don't have to go out and spend ten thousand to fifteen thousand dollars going for the legal, legal process of something that's worth a couple hundred bucks, the DOR can, can review. Uh, with that, um, they went forward, and we did have that at the auction. It was packaged as a group, and, uh, there were no, no one was interested in that land. That was done strategically, because once you put it out to an auction after the land of low value, it then allows it to fall into the, um, tax title process. Which we will be putting an article together at town meeting and working with the conservation commission. Um, and this was a project that was started by Stephen Cole, um, about two years ago, uh, with the intent of trying to develop a recreation area in the Great Cedar Swamp. But you can't do that unless you actually follow the process, which we've done, and that plan is working as we anticipated. Uh, one thing that we, that, um, that we did pull at town meeting, uh, was, uh, was the, um, the little island that's down there, Mark, what's that called? Grape Island, not Grape Island, it's, um-
No, I, I can't remember.
Yep.
It's an island in Great Cedar-
It's called Hemlock Island.
No, not, this is tied into the other project, Wyndham Road.
Oh, picnic-
Oh, you're talking, I thought you were talking about the-
Picnic, I, I thought you were talking about the Cedar Swamp.
So, Picnic Island is also a thing of land of low value, um, so the town meeting cannot do anything with that, uh, because of the process that it goes through with land of low value. So we are gonna be reassessing that. Uh, as it relates to Wyndham Road, as we had talked about in the previous meetings, the whole shore, uh, shoreline, that can all be addressed, but Picnic Island cannot be addressed at this annual town meeting. So that, that's still gonna be a process, uh, for the future.
How, just to revisit that, though, however, it's not in any danger?
It's not in any danger, it can't be changed, nothing can happen to it, it's, it's-
I just think the residents are gonna wanna be assured that we just need to find another way to make, make sure that it's, uh, always preserved as it is.
Correct.
For the residents.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, nope, absolutely. So that is there, um, and, and I guess the, the other thing that I just wanna bring to people's attention is that, um, I have been looking and working with, and, and, starting with, um, um, the original, uh, engineering and law firm that were to subdivide, um, the, um, the parcel, um, at the, with the Eldridge House, um, down in South Carver. And that is two parcels, um, there was a desire from the owner, uh, or the engineer, um, uh, lawyer for the firm to develop that into some type of a condo development, or in some type of a multi-house unit, whatever that may be. They did not move forward with that, however, they have gone forward and created four Form A lots. Um, according to the permitting and inspection department, um, now, these are odd-sized lots, just because in order to get the proper frontage and the proper area for, for drinking water and the buffer to have stormwater, is they're just oddly configured parcels. Of those four parcels, it's anticipated that three of them could sustain and build a house on there. The fourth parcel is somewhat questionable, um, I am in conversations with that group to determine, uh, if they are interested in selling that to the town. And if they aren't, then I would come back with a proposal, uh, to the Board of Selectmen to look at acquiring that for conservation or other type of recreation purposes. And put appropriate exclusion on that to limit the amount of development that can happen on that particular area, 'cause I think, and we've heard through the conservation commission and many others, that that's an important attribute of the town. And we don't wanna see, you know, four McMansions, you know, on there, um, and, and I think three can be built, the fourth one is questionable. Uh, so we are in touch with, um, the actual, um, attorney for the project.
So the land's been divided into four, uh-
Form A lots.
A lots, uh, and it's only one of them that you think the town might have an interest in?
Well, I think there's only one that- Well, I think there's only one that could be in a number that we could afford.
Okay.
I think is what it's going to be. I think that those will be premium lots, they'll be generating a lot of money for those, and there are incentives for a developer to work with the community, turn those over to help reduce down their tax liability. And that's what I've done in the past, and that's what I'd be trying to do here, too.
Okay. Questions?
Where are we going to find the money to pay for one of these lots?
When I come back to the Board of Selectmen, I would certainly present a funding mechanism for that, and you and I have talked on the phone, and I've assured you that there is funding for it.
Could you repeat what you said about incentives for the developer?
Sure. So it's really a tax avoidance, is that when you're doing, if a developer donates a portion of their land or development rights to a town, to any town, they can get tax write-offs. So it's just trying to figure out how something can be structured to allow them to financially benefit by donating it to the town and/or the town paying a partial portion of the funds necessary for that. Any other question?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. We will now go to community announcements. Mr. Dunham.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep this real short and sweet with the fact that we may get out of here early.
Speak too soon.
I just want to wish everybody in town, residents, a very happy Hanukkah and a very Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to enjoy your family, your friends. It's a good time to spend with your loved ones, and I hope everybody gets that opportunity. And also, keeping our thoughts and prayers, our service members who are overseas that can't be with their relatives at this time of year. That's it.
Thank you. Bob?
You took the words out of my mouth here already.
I'm sorry.
Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah to everyone. I want to thank the department heads for their update. It was really informative, we got it. I liked it, I'd like to see more of that. Lets us know what's going on in the town, I appreciate it very much. Also, with that, with our service members, we also have merchant marines that are out there, and my son's one of them, over there, way over there. Merry Christmas. Okay, thank you.
Sarah?
Yes, thank you. I attended the Board of Health meeting today, where the board discussed a proposed nuisance light regulation, and they did vote to, or they did decide actually to have a public hearing, and I believe it's going to be scheduled for their first meeting in January, which if I'm not incorrect, is 21st of January. But that will be posted on their page of the website, and my understanding is that the entire regulation is going to be posted, too. So that's a good thing. And I also wanted to thank the department heads. It was, it was good to catch up on what everyone's doing. And happy holidays.
Mr. Townsend?
Well, thank you. Keep it the same here. I also want to thank everyone. I want to wish all our residents a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, however you celebrate. I hope you have a wonderful holiday. And I really want to reach out and congratulate Donna Forre and all the volunteers that took part in the Rees Across Carver event. Sarah was there, as well as Selectman Dunham and myself, and that was really a great event. The way it recognized our Carver veterans, especially at this time of year, I thought was really important, and I just think that's one of the things that makes Carver special. So Donna, thank you for putting that together and continuing to work on that, and that's all.
And I guess I would just add that it is the, it is the season to try to remember those that are not as well off, and we have Shane give thanks right here in town, and I'm sure people that may be struggling at Christmas time, that need the food pantry that all of us should try to remember to go by. I know I've had some fun with my grandkids. We go shopping and get a bunch of food, and then they get a kick out of carrying it all in, and it helps to give them an early example of what it means to give back to the community. And there are other, all sorts of other charities this time of year that really could use our assistance, both physically, whether it's helping to serve food at a homeless shelter, or financially, whatever you can do. So I would just ask you all to keep that in mind as we go through the rest of the season. And again, I wish everyone a Happy Hanukkah and a Merry Christmas. And with that, we will move on to the minutes of November 19th. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, we approve them as written.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, they have to be split into two. I was not at the meeting on the 19th, but I was in the December 3 meeting.
Well, I'm only, we're only doing the 19th.
Okay, well, you said the minutes.
No, minutes of the 19th. Motion made and seconded. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes of December 3rd.
I move we approve the minutes of December 3rd.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yes, Mr., oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
So I have a correction, Mr. Chair, on page four. Where the KP Law hourly rate changed to $195. What's written here isn't actually what happened, so I did not second that vote, and I voted against it, and I'm pretty sure Bob did, too. So at my recollection is the vote was 3 to 2.
That's my recollection.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't second, I don't know who seconded it, but...
I'm going to guess it's one of the two people to my left.
We can go back and look at the video.
Yeah, we'll look at the video and get that correct, so we'll amend that per the video.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes. So I didn't get this letter by Ms. Forehand until we got our information here, but some of the stuff that she's saying here is incorrect, inaccurate, and because of that, and it was not read in its entirety in front of the board, then it shouldn't be included. Because I didn't have a chance to turn around and rebut what's in here.
Well, you don't for citizens' participation, anyway. We had a similar case before when Alan Jermaine came before us, and the letter was entered into the minutes, and then when Jen Bogarts came before us, she read her letter and it was entered into the minutes. So we do have a precedent that when people present us with their statement, that it is entered in as part of the minutes.
There's also, when I was gone, the complaint about, from the citizen about the town administrator and the email he'd sent to...
Yes, Emily Stiles.
Emily Stiles.
Her letter was also included. So it's, it is precedent, Bob.
That's fine, then. I want to be able to put in an addendum to this, because with this meeting, to file my, my information that I have that's incorrect in this, because she shouldn't be able to print stuff here that's incorrect, and it didn't happen.
But we don't have a policy where we have responded to the letters that have been submitted, that letters are just accepted as part of citizens' participation.
I was never informed of this letter until that day. I never got a copy of it to see what was stated.
I understand, but...
And that's not right.
Nobody ever saw Ms. Stiles' letter until it was submitted. Nobody ever saw the Jen Bogarts' letter until it was submitted.
So at...
So that there's nothing unusual in your case.
At the next meeting, I am going to go out and read to let you know what I say about her letter, okay, and why I say the information she has is incorrect.
That's a good idea.
I'll figure it out ahead of time as to whether we'll allow that.
In citizens' participation, he could certainly do that.
If we continue to have citizens' participation, because if you two are going to weaponize citizens' participation now, then I'll, then we'll eliminate that as well.
Fine, you're the one not letting us speak.
No, that is town council indicating you are not supposed to be bringing up topics for discussion.
That's not what the Attorney General has stated.
Well, I'm, so I understand, Bob, that you feel our town council's opinion is wrong, and that the Attorney, and I have asked them to check with the Attorney General's office on this.
I did, and I believe Bob did, he sounds like he did.
Okay, I have.
Well, if you present an opinion from the Attorney General's office saying that town council is wrong, then we can change the policy.
It's not supposed to limit the officials here from discussing issues, all right?
If you have an issue that you would like to discuss, call me, and we can put it on the agenda for discussion. It should not be a monologue of your opinion of what's going on. That's the same thing you're complaining about when someone presents a letter during citizens' participation that we cannot respond to. If you, during your select board update, issue a monologue that we cannot respond to, that is the very same situation.
And we can bring it up at the next meeting, okay, and discuss it.
If you want, if you want to put it on the agenda, it should not be a grandstanding measure. You should, you should bring it up. If you feel it's worthy of an agenda item, let's put it on the agenda. That's what we have always done. It's only been in recent months that suddenly we're having a critique of town government during select board updates. That's not the intention. That is not the intention. Duxbury, Plymouth, Kingston, Lakeville, where, and Middleborough do not even have select board updates. We were unusual in having it. So it's not as if we're doing something unusual by eliminating it. It was intended to be community announcements. That's what it was always used for up until this year. So, again, I am more than happy to engage in discussion on topics, but it should not be the ability for a select board member to just spew something out without the ability of other members to respond.
And as the Attorney General has always said, is that if the chairman did not know about this within 48 hours of the meeting...
But it has to be, my interpretation has been, it was of such a timely issue that we had to take it up. So I...
It's not what they said.
That's not what it says.
Mr. Chairman.
It's not what they've said.
Chairman. No, no, but that means we can add anything you want within 48 hours, if you think of it. It doesn't have to have any justification.
And then you can bring it up the next meeting, if you want to discuss it further, all right, and you want to take action.
Well, when you depose of me as chair, then you can do it your way, Bob.
Okay.
All right? Because there's free, there's free speech, and there is, there is what I would call responsible free speech. And I know you're a proponent of free speech, but it needs to be responsible free speech. If you have something to say, give other people the ability to respond to it, not just you going out critiquing the town, criticizing people, without the ability for those people to respond or to present. You're frustrated now because of what was written by Ms. Farrand, correct?
Most definitely, because I didn't have a copy of it at the time.
And that's exactly what happens when you speak during your select board update. When you speak during your select board update and go say something, we do not have the ability to respond.
Yes, you do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you do.
Mr. Chairman?
No, we do not.
If I, correct me if I'm wrong, you went to KNP. KNP rendered us, you a decision. You shared that decision with everybody and stated that that is our position going forward.
Correct.
So my suggestion is if Mr. Belbin can get a contrary one that he wants to present at a future meeting, fine, but for right now, since the chairman gets to finally decide, and you've already given, you know, town councils given their opinion, whether people agree with it or not, I suggest we stick with it until that's proven inaccurate.
So you're allowing me to get another council for the town?
No, not another council, no.
Not for the other town, no. That will not be, not to the cost of the towns. I said Mr. Belbin individually. That means if you want to go out and pay another council...
No, 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 no.
I think the key is here, that we need to have an opportunity as a board to discuss issues that are brought up before the board. I think that's the issue we're trying to get to, if I understand it correctly. And that's the issue, I think. If you or I have something that we think is important and needs to be discussed, let's get it on the agenda and discuss it. And I, and as far as the letter goes, I know we've done a number of these since I've been on the board, and maybe since we don't have an opportunity in any case to read these letters before they're entered into the minutes, maybe we need to have a discussion about whether we're going to continue to allow them to be entered into the minutes, maybe...
They have to be entered into the minutes.
Well...
Any documents that are presented publicly become public records.
Well, then maybe they should be read in citizens' participation, rather than just blindly entered at the minutes.
Well, again, I'm also, I've also been given orders from this board that if something is coming across as mean-spirited, that I should stop it from being read.
True.
So if you want to remove that restriction, then I'll just let people speak when they come before the board, regardless of what they say.
I can sympathize with anyone who suddenly sees a letter and doesn't agree with it. That's my concern, so perhaps we need to have some further discussion.
I mean, again, I, just to make it very clear, after we had this discussion, I asked town council to make an interpretation about what the use of select board update could be. They indicated that it could, that typically, traditionally, it's been used as community updates and has not been utilized as an opportunity to bring up political issues or policy issues or anything, because you'd be violating the open meeting law by bringing things up that had not been posted to be discussed. Apparently, we have a disagreement. I've always held the 48-hour rule that we include it because something came up, and it's of a timely basis that needed to be addressed prior to our next meeting. That's my interpretation. I think it's a responsible interpretation. Otherwise, anything that pops into our minds within 48 hours would be fair game to throw on the agenda, and that does not seem fair to the public, that whatever we think of 10 minutes before the meeting, we can suddenly throw onto the agenda, because that's when we thought of it. There's no advertising to the public as to what's going to be discussed, and I think it's an abuse of the 48-hour privilege.
So I actually wrote to the Attorney General's office, and I should have printed that off, but I can, I can get that, their answer to you guys.
I'd love to read it. All right. Where were we?
I guess we need to vote on accepting the minutes from December 3rd.
Uh, yeah, did...
As amended?
As amended.
Yes, as amended.
On page four.
Because, yeah, they would notify...
Does that include the video reference? Was that the one that included the video?
No, that was the, that was the, that was the...
The vote that was, yeah. Okay.
This is, the big amendment is the fact that Sarah did not, they were throwing a 5-0 vote.
Okay. All right, those in favor of approving the minutes of 12:03, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No, because of the letter that's in here, and that I had not had a chance to go ahead and reboot it, rebut it.
All right, well, we...
But that's fine, I'll do that at the next meeting.
Well, again, we'll have to figure out if we're going to allow rebuttals, because we haven't to this point in time.
Well, if things are wrong in here, then it should be...
You can put it on Facebook, Bob, and correct it out there.
Oh, okay. Thanks for giving me that permission.
You don't need my permission, Bob. I don't think I could stop you from being on Facebook. And actually, I've changed my position on the mic. Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the common vehicular license for Norida Energy Retail Inc. for 133 North Main.
Second.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the request for the same company at 303 Tremont.
Second.
Same type of request.
Same.
Common vehicleized license.
Yep.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have a request for a parking permit for a fishing tournament at Sampson's Pond on May 17th from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we have unforeseen, within 48 hours, a request from the Carver Sportsman's Club for a January 31st 2020 event. Authorized sale hours from 12 noon to 12 midnight, about 250 people expected, and it's a nonprofit, all alcoholic license that's being requested. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, oh, you're recusing yourself because you're on the board. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And please note that Selectman Belbin recused himself because of the conflict of interest. All right, our next meetings coming, yes, our next meetings coming up are on January